Um, sorry, my computer's being slow about downloading these. There they are. There we go.
Here's my headphones.
Um, all right, well, I guess I'll say hi to everybody. This is a a meeting of the city, Durham City Council's Legislative Committee. Um, it's Friday, November thirteenth at three P M. I'm the Chair of the Committee, Charlie Reese, also privileged to be a member of the Durham City Council. I have lots of my colleagues on the, on the meeting with us. Um, and one of the committee members is still not here. So I think we'll uh maybe vamp a little bit until he logs on. Um, we just got off as another Zoom not terribly long ago together, and so uh he may have tried to get something to eat in between. Um, if uh if members of the committee want to say um want to announce themselves, so Mayor Shul, feel on, let's go ahead and do that.
Good afternoon, Councilmember Reese and everybody else. Glad to be here this afternoon.
Yes, thank you. Uh greetings, Pierce Freelon here. I do have some food over to my right, which I will be munching on on silent throughout the meeting.
Sounds good to me. Um, I see two other of my council colleagues, Mayor Protem, Gillian Johnson, and Councilmember Freeman present. If you guys want to say hi to the folks watching at home, this is the time to do that.
Hey, thanks. Uh, yep, Gillian Johnson, Mayor Protem. I'm not on this committee, but um I just love our legislative agenda. So I'm here to observe and uh weigh in if it is desired. Thanks.
The good news is uh the legislative agenda loves you too. Councilmember Freeman, your wave was greeting enough. You can say hi. We're just waiting.
Good afternoon, everyone. Deidra Freeman, just visiting the Legislative Committee.
See, Councilmember Cabiero is logged in. Aloha. Um. So I thought, yes, go right ahead, Mr. Mayor. Oh, no, that's Carmesha.
That's Carmesha. Wow.
Carmesha, by the way, you are totally winning the Zoom background award today. That is an astonishing setup.
Perfect. I love it when a plan comes together. So, good afternoon, um, Mr. Chair, um, members of the Legislative Subcommittee. I'm Carmesha Wallace, Assistant to the um City Manager. And I know who is Ms. Wanda Page, who is on this call, so I certainly want to uh recognize Ms. Page, who is here. Um, I also want to recognize Krista Cucaro, who is providing support from the City Attorney's Office. And uh Krista and I have been in communication on these legislative proposals. And then, of course, our city clerk is here capturing the minutes of this very important discussion. Um, meanwhile, we do have some guests who are uh joining us um in this Zoom meeting today. Um, and uh one being Senator Mike Woodruff, who of course is a former council member and is now um one of our state senators. And so Senator Woodruff was able to join in for the last Subcommittee meeting. I would send another meeting with him, and he says, "The good thing about the virtual environment, he gets to go to even more meetings now than what he did." Since COVID, just wanted to acknowledge Senator Woodruff, who's on with us today, along with some other guests. And I will point out that some of our other guests include uh Jacob Robert Rogers, who's here on behalf of the uh Board of Adjustment. Um, Jim Savara, um, who I know that most of you know, as well as Ryan Smith from the Office of Performance Innovation.
Um, it is now three oh six. Uh, Mr. Mayor, do you have any advice for me about whether or not we should wait just a bit more for council?
I don't. I don't have any advice for you, uh, Mr. Chair. I think um he knows.
Fair enough. It is now three oh. Go ahead.
He knows about the meeting, right? And I know you talked to him about it before. You remind him so.
Um, tell you what, let me do one more quick thing. Yeah, not yet. I appreciate all the support, Mr. Mayor. So, all right, so let's uh go ahead and get started then. Um, we have three or four members. Uh, Councilmember Middleton will be with us shortly, I expect. Uh, we also have um every other member of the council on uh to participate, so that's fantastic as well. It makes me feel special that they all want to be on when I'm chairing a meeting, so that's very thoughtful. Uh, Carmesha, I think uh that is the uh, that's, that does it for the first item on our agenda. Um, why don't you go ahead and get started on the second item?
Sure. So um um you all should have received um a rewatch. This Legislative Subcommittee met um two weeks ago on Friday, October thirtieth, to uh discuss the proposals that were submitted by city staff as well as by um city council members. And uh at the conclusion of that meeting, the Subcommittee wanted uh or asked that I get some feedback from um the city's boards, committees, commissions, to see if they had any uh legislative proposals that they would like for this Subcommittee to consider for input into the legislative agenda. So after uh our last Subcommittee meeting, I did reach out to every city board, committee, commission chair, as well as their staff liaison, to let them know about the process and to ask for their feed, um their input. Um, I received uh one proposal from the Board of Adjustment. Um, and I say from the Board of Adjustment, Jacob Rogers was the individual who submitted it on behalf of the um Board of Adjustment. And so I've included that, forwarded that to you in an email. And uh in essence, what the Board of Adjustment is looking to do is to amend um state statute, uh, sorry, I think I'm, my camera may have gone off, uh, to amend the state statute. Good, okay, to accommodate for um quasi judicial hearings. So this legislation that's currently at play is one that was created um as a result of working, conducting public hearings in the virtual environment. And so the Board of Adjustment has experienced some challenges with, in some instances where people have requested to continue um quasi judicial hearings. And so what the Board of Adjustment is looking to do is to uh be allowed to continue the public hearing to a set period of time, I believe, and that set period of time is thirty days. I think that the way that the statute is currently written, um, it just could continue indefinitely. And so, of course, that uh creates some concern for the applicant as well as um opponents. And again, this is specific to quasi judicial hearings, so um, I got that request fairly quickly after asking for it. So um I do know that this is something that has been a concern while in the virtual environment. So if there are any questions for that, then we can um certainly make uh Mr. Rogers available to speak, or if there are no questions, we can move on to the other items.
Do either of the um my colleagues on the committee have any questions uh about that proposal?
Pretty straightforward.
Mr. Mayor, you got a thumbs up there?
Thumbs up.
I really appreciate the Board of Adjustment for coming forward with that. Also appreciate Mr. Jake, Mr. Rogers uh being with us on the call, but I don't have any questions, and neither does anybody else in the committee. Uh, my sense is I'm very happy to recommend that we move that forward onto our um legislative agenda.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. And so moving on to the next series of items, these are requests that came from the Dear program as uh in partnership with the North Carolina Justice Center. Um, and these items were submitted by Ryan Smith, who's on the call with us today as well. And so uh when we last met, there was some talk about um some legislative proposals that we submitted in the past relative to driver's license expunions and voluntary dismissals. Um, and so there was some legislation passed. Uh, the name was Second Chance Act. And while there were some advances made in that legislation, uh, Dear as well as NC Justice Center would like to um further some of that work. And so the first item that they are recommending or asking is an amendment to um state law to eliminate driver's license suspension for non-public safety-related matters. So just the um, the brief description that I've included here that a driver's license can be suspended indefinitely for failure to pay traffic tickets or for failure to appear in court for minor traffic violations. Um, and so the recommendation is that driver's license not be suspended for non-payment of fines, particularly since um the, the impact is primarily on people due to their inability to pay. And quite frankly, the group felt there is no correlation between that and road safety. So again, Ryan is on the call. Are there any questions? Not?
Carmesha, are these recommendations that we're going to hear from Dear and the Justice Center through Ryan Smith, are these uh envisioned as replacements for the previous items that were on our agenda?
Um, yeah, there, there's, there's a connection with what was on the previous item, but these items, these items were not addressed in the Second Chance Act. So these are, we'll bring these things back.
These are kind of the leftover pieces that didn't get, didn't get passed. That's great.
That's correct.
Um, okay, thank you. Um, and there are, how many of these uh are coming in from Dear and the Justice Center? I'd see one, two, like six of them?
Yes.
Um. All right, well, let's take them one at a time. Do any of my colleagues have questions for Ryan on the um on item number two on this, on the legislative proposals? Yeah, no, I think that seems pretty straightforward as well, um, and would make a huge difference to folks. So let's move that on to our legislative agenda um and move on to the next item.
All right. And so the next item is to eliminate permanent suspensions for non-D W I related convictions. And so again, this is an item that um came through the same, same uh associations. But in two thousand and fifteen, um, there was state law that uh eliminated, th- this, this proposal is looking to eliminate a permanent suspension for driving while license is revoked. So um right now, under the statute twenty dash twenty eight point one, still allows permanent suspension for three or more moving violation conviction. So again, um, just folks felt like this was just another barrier um that interferes with people's inability to um, to, to go about their day of lives, basically.
So the only thing that this would change would be to um remove that permanent suspicion, suspension for three or more moving violations?
That's correct.
Um, all right, seems clearly stated. Um, do any of my council colleagues on the committee have any questions or concerns they want to raise about that? And Ryan is adding in the chat, those that do not involve D W Is. Um. So um, I actually have a question for Ryan. Can we, can you make him available for us on this?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Councilmember Reese, and other members of council. This is Ryan.
Great. Ryan, thank you for being on the call today and also for making these proposals. This is, these are um pretty great, honestly. Um, can you tell me um would this, so is there a permanent revocation for um things like um a conviction for vehicular homicide, for example? Or some other, some other uh moving violation that results in uh the death of an individual?
So, Councilmember Reese, one thing I'd be happy to do, I, I'm not a lawyer as much as I feel like I've gotten a lot of training through my close work with Dear over the last two and a half years. Um, this is, this is what I know. I want to clarify a couple of points. So one, one of the requests of the Dear team is while in two thousand and fifteen, the General Assembly amended twenty dash twenty eight point one to eliminate permanent suspensions for all driving while license revoked, they did not make that retroactive. So one of their requests is, let's also make that retroactive because it didn't clear out the backlog for individuals who had that issue. So that's one part of clarification that I wanted to add. And then the only, I, I cannot speak to the specifics of your question, but I would be happy to follow up and get a um, get a memo with any detailed questions uh from our colleagues at the Justice Center, who I would feel more confident in them answering some of the uh logistics around, or the details of that.
So Ryan, here's my, here's my question, is that um there are uh, and my internet connection is unstable, so I apologize. We'll struggle through. Um, the, 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 what, how it reads is eliminate permanent suspensions for non-D W I related convictions. And I just don't know if there are, aside from the three or more moving violations, is there any other act or or status or, or conviction that would trigger a permanent suspension that is not D W I related, aside from the three or more moving violations? Um, I guess the other question is, does, would this revision, does it actually call for removing all permanent suspicions that are not D W I related? Or is it just the three or more moving violation permanent suspension? Does that make sense?
That makes sense, and I can reach out and um I would be able to get back to all uh answers, I'm sure, by early next week.
Great, let's do that. I, let me just say, I think it's a great idea to reduce the number of per, the, the number of permanent suspensions uh like for the reasons that are stated and that have been explained. Um, I just also want to make sure that we don't um end up accidentally endorsing um ending permanent suspensions for things that maybe we think ought to be a permanent, to the extent that a suspension is ever permanent, because like it says, um, it's basically a three-year um elimination of the driving privilege and then uh some additional hearings. So thank you, Ryan. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. I'll get working on it.
Anybody else on the committee have any questions or concerns?
Yeah, I, I appreciate you bringing that up, Charlie. The thing that came up in my mind, or Mr. Chair, the thing that came up in my mind was like a hit and run or something like that that may not be D W I related, but might totally be something we want somebody to have their license suspended for. But I don't even know if that would be considered a you know, a driving thing, or if it's assault with a deadly weapon. Like, I just don't know enough and would like more questions. There's an interesting point that you raised.
Yeah, no, I, I, the reason I got into it is because I, I do have some experience uh with traffic convictions, not personally, but as a, long ago, I was a, I was a traffic or prosecutor. And I just don't, I think the law has changed a bit since I was doing that. And also, I don't think as a prosecutor ever really got involved in whether or not a particular conviction or charge or offense would trigger any kind of suspension or permanent suspension. So I know it's a thing, but I don't know what the thing is. So I know Ryan's going to help us learn more about that um in the days to come. But you know, as long as I can get some comfort around what i- if it's just the three non-moving violation provision that's being removed, I'm very, very comfortable with it.
Yeah.
But if it's anything non-D W I related, I think we'd want to have more conversation about it.
Right.
Um, Mr. Mayor, anything you want to say before we move on to number four? Then we're moving on to number four.
That sounds like a wise course of action. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So the next item on the, on the list is another gift from Ryan, uh, expand function relief to allow automated expulsion of eligible convictions. And again, the Second Chance Act became law in June um of this year. And so this is looking to um expand expulsion relief to allow for automatic expulsion of charges that are dismissed um starting in December twenty twenty one. So basically, it does provide, there's a gap between the amount of people who are eligible for convention expulsion and those who've actually had their convictions expunged.
And I'm happy to add any clarifying points here. And talking to our colleagues at the Justice Center today on this one, I think the clearest way I can describe it is, we have automatic expulsion under the Second Chance Act for dismissed charges only, but the law allows for other, some other types of convictions to be expunged, but there is not automatic expulsion allowed for those currently. And we know that in the absence of automatic expulsion, we're going to have individuals who have charges on their record and convictions on their record that are eligible to be expunged under the law, but they're not getting expunged because of lack of access to an attorney or other types of barriers. And so we're trying to, if it's eligible under the law, we'd like the system to take care of removing that from someone's record. That's the basic part, heart of this. Yes, Council?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. Um, uh, why uh, why twenty twenty one December? Is that like a clerical thing or just takes a while for them to be able to put the new procedure into practice?
I think that's probably what the delay was. Yeah, usually, I mean, uh, in my experience in conversations with A O C, a lot of these things are just figuring out how to, once the law is passed, how to administer it and make sure that the automatic nature is happening. And that usually requires some work because our system, we have an outdated uh court record system. It is still largely paper-based. And these, these technical things are tricky for the state to figure out how to do, which is one reason that they are working on what will be an expensive but necessary complete overhaul and upgrade of our, on a court record system that will make more things possible in the future. But I think that's the reason for why the why the current law that passed allowed for ex, automatic expunions for dismissals, but only beginning in December of twenty twenty one. But I can seek clarity on that and provide uh an answer to that question.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else have any other questions about this particular item? No, I think it's, it's, this is a good effort to try to fill that gap. Um, and I'm happy to move it on to the legislative agenda.
All right, sounds good.
Uh.
Go ahead.
All right.
So the next item um is a, a recommendation or request to repeal the North Carolina drug tax. So um apparently, state law imposes a tax on quote unauthorized substances. And if someone is in possession of a minimum amount of that controlled substance or an authorized substance, then they are obligated to pay taxes on that substance within forty-eight hours of when they first came into their possession. And so um, there's a request to do away with that drug tax.
Wow. Uh, yeah. That seems like a good idea. Uh. Uh, anybody else?
How much uh revenue the state collects from such a tax, but um you know, the taxes in place.
Okay, um, I think I, it's safe to say that we're going to be on board with that. Um, and uh let's uh, let's put that on the agenda, on the legislative agenda and move on to the next thing.
Okay. So the next two uh items are related, um, but there's a distinction. So they are related because the intent of both items uh is to ban the box, so to speak. And so the first item is banning the box relative to public housing. So uh right now, um, people who apply for public housing have to or are expected to indicate on their application um if and when they have a criminal record, which of course creates a ripple effect for them. I think in most cases, they're not permitted to uh, to lease public housing if they have a criminal record, which obviously um public housing is based on income. So if the income doesn't meet um the market rate, then that creates a host of, of challenges and ripple effects for them. So as many of you know, the city of Durham has banned the box when it's employment application. And so this is an effort to um seek something similar um for public housing specifically.
Um, Ryan, are, are you still available for us?
Yes, sir.
Awesome. Um, is the, is the ban the box move for public housing, is that an issue for the federal government? Is that a HUD regulation of some kind?
So I asked that question of our attorneys, or one of the attorneys I was speaking to at the Justice Center. She believed that it could be handled at the state level, but I could go back and ask for clarification. And I'd be happy to put it back to you all.
Um, it, it wouldn't surprise me that if, is, if other states had done this, then the answer is pretty clear. Um, and uh, I'm, I'm, I would be very excited to put it on the legislative agenda. And if our delegation comes back and says, yeah, we, we got our legislative staff looking at this, and they think it's a federal issue, then we can certainly issue a strongly worded letter to our congressional delegation um asking them to support this change in federal law. But um, I think, I think I'm perfectly comfortable putting it on our agenda, but if my colleagues have any thoughts.
I think it's good to put on the agenda. I also thought it was a federal regulation, though, so we'll find out.
We will, we will indeed. Exactly right. Uh, Councilor. Uh. Just put the wrong button. Okay, uh, on to the next then, Carmesha.
All right. So again, that the um last item from Dear and NC Justice Center again is a, a request to ban the box. And this is uh relative to fair chance housing, I'm sorry, hiring, sorry about that. Um, to allow people to apply for, uh, for positions without having to uh divulge um that they have a criminal record, at least in the initial stages of the process. And again, uh, this is an effort that the city of Durham has already um implemented some years ago. And so just looking to make that um broader um at, at the state level, state.
Well, I think that's a fantastic idea. Colleagues, what do you think? Okay, let's move that on to our legislative agenda uh with a big hearty uh yee-haw and um uh, are the, is that the, so that, that is item number seven.
Mm-hmm.
Are these all of the specific written proposals that we receive from our boards, committees, and commissions?
Those are the only pro, written proposals that um, that we receive from the boards, committees, commissions.
Right.
So that there are some items that um were shared today.
Right. So um, I guess it was late last week, early this week, we received um an email from uh the Environmental Affairs Board. And it contained uh three or four bulleted or numbered items that appeared upon reflection to be better suited for our um advocacy agenda. Uh, just because they didn't appear to advocate any specific legislation, but were more um geared toward, the city should support these efforts. Um, additional funding for that, that kind of um agenda. And so that was the reason why I had uh recommended uh earlier today that we do that. Let me see if I can find that. That email, where did that go? There we go. Um. And so those items, um, and I'll just uh were number one, closely follow and support legislation that considers changes to the current regulated monopoly structure for energy utilities. Um, I think, and I think all of these things are going to be items that flow directly out of the recent agreement the city entered into with Duke Energy. Um, and were some of the things that we definitely wanted uh to get done to, to help the city meet our sustainability goals uh in the, in the decades to come. Number two, support any legislation that expands access to low-cost financing for renewable energy or energy efficiency. And number three, support increase of appropriation funding for the state's energy and technology centers. Um, and so um, I don't know if my colleagues had any thoughts about which part of the agenda they might want to go on. Councilmember Middleton, how's it going? Representing Brooklyn, as always. Good to see you.
Well, thank you. Sorry, guys. I'm multitasking in between assignments, so forgive me. I'm dialed in now.
Did you, did you change clothes since our last Zoom? That's amazing. Wow, okay.
I showered too, so.
I didn't know there was a wardrobe change. I would have, I would have done that myself, and I'm embarrassed. Um, so uh, Mark Anthony, we were just going over the email that we got from Casey Collins from the Environmental Affairs Board. And those three numbered items that they wanted to add to our agenda. Um, and um was, I guess we were trying to decide or about to, or about to talk about whether or not they were better suited for the legislative agenda or the advocacy agenda. And I I'd made a suggestion by email earlier today, but I'm not strongly wedded to it. I didn't know if anybody else had thoughts.
I think that's fine. I think that you're right. It's not, it's not specific legislation that's been asked for. Um, I do think they're important things, and I think they are, as opposed to some of the other things that we've got on our agenda. Uh, Councilmember Reese, as we discussed uh yesterday, maybe it was, um, there's some, some of these things I think could be, could get uh minority, I mean, uh majority party support, Republican support um as opposed to some of the other things on our agenda that might not. Uh, so I do think it would be good to talk to our delegation about it, but I think you're right. It, it going on the advocacy agenda makes perfect sense.
Okay. Um. I guess, uh, Carmesha, the next item I wanted to do is, um, or is it already on the agenda, kind of the follow-up from some of the open items at our last meeting?
Yes.
And I'm having a hard time pulling up the actual agenda now. Hold on, where'd it go? There it is. So I guess that's maybe the next item on the agenda is to kind of walk back through that list.
Yeah.
And there were, I had, we had had some, a few questions and a request for additional information. I know we had, and then there were, I think, three items that Councilmember Freeman had put on that we wanted some more. that we wanted some more information. And she is on the call with us today to help us with that. So why don't we go ahead and just go down that list? If that's alright with you, Carmesha.
I think that's a good way to proceed. And so I think what I have, the first item that we had a question on for her, Councilmember Freeman, are you? Just want to make sure she's still on, I know she said she was gonna. So the first item was develop trust fund for disaster recovery and flood mitigation. And so Councilmember Freeman, can you hear us?
I can. I'm multitasking as well.
Okay, so Councilmember Freeman, will you walk us through this particular request that you made to add this to, I think, I believe it's the advocacy agenda?
Hold on one second, I know I sent a, shared an email just with a lot of details. I wanted to make sure. But mainly, this was a request coming out of the work that the Pew Institute and Deberry were doing and acknowledging that there was some disparity and correlations around where flooding was occurring and trying to figure out how to support prevention and mitigation for flooding in areas across the country. There were some policy additions that were made and they shared which areas they were made in. And I noticed that there was one in Bravard, North Carolina, that was, was almost, it sounded exactly like how I sound at our planning commissions. And I couldn't help but acknowledge that there, there was a huge, if there is space for that in, in Transylvania County conversations, I think it might be, might be a time wise decision to move it forward from Durham as well and make sure that the Durham delegation is supportive of setting up a mitigation fund. It's acknowledging also the TJ cog has been talking about it and another, a number of other cogs have been talking about it across the state. And I know that there's a whole lot of conversation on the resiliency side so that we can make sure that there's equity involved. And then just on the other side is the, it's kind of the flood mitigation conversation. But just figuring this is a good time to make sure that we're supportive of making that a priority.
Do any of my colleagues on the committee have any questions? Clarifying questions for Councilmember Freeman after she has provided us that explanation with this request. Seeing none, I, I will just say that I, I really appreciate you being here to help us understand it a little better. I think that is a fantastic idea. Just to clarify, it was this, let me make sure, see if I can pull this back up. Where'd it go? Multiple screens, it's a problem. This was, let's see it, where'd it go? Right. So even though there, there is no bill we have in mind, this seems very kind of specific to me. And the, I believe, Councilmember Freeman requested that this go on the legislative agenda. Is that, is that correct, instead of the advocacy agenda?
Yes, and I can, I can work to try and make sure I hammer out any specific policy. I'm just not sure, I haven't done this before where I actually write it. So if I can get some support on that, that would be helpful.
Well, I think that what we'll do is this is, well, you know, we're going to talk about a lot of this stuff at the legislative, well, it would have been the legislative breakfast. We'll put the breakfast per in quotes now, because it's, it'll be in the middle of the afternoon. Yeah, it'll be a late breakfast. And we can, and I think at that time, that's a great time for us to talk, or at least I guess begin the conversation with our delegation about that very, that very issue. But I think putting it on the legislative agenda indicates that this is something we want our, our delegation to push forward and to be involved in bill draft and bring. And I think the nature of this problem, that Councilmember Freeman, as you have said, we see this time and again in our resignings at the council. And you also saw them at the planning commission. And I think it belongs kind of in the front rank, because I agree it is, it is a real problem that we're not, we're not doing enough about. So I'm perfectly comfortable moving that on the legislative agenda as you requested. And unless my colleagues have other thoughts, maybe we'll go on to the next item you brought up. Carmesha, what was that?
Watch our aging infrastructures to address the aging.
Yes, okay. Go right ahead, Councilmember Freeman.
Yes, and just noting on a federal level, there's been a lot of bipartisan push around infrastructure and supports in place to make sure that folks can address their aging infrastructure. So in, in many cases, it's bridges, but in other cases, it might be water mains. Just making sure that the, the state is prepared for the funding that will be available. It'd be good to get lined up with some legislation that identifies the areas we would like to see funding directed to. And I know that Durham has a number of areas that could see some supports. And so I just wanted to make sure that I put that in front of us as well. I think it'll be a great way to build back Durham.
Wow, bringing some slogans into the room, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
That's very strong. By the way, I'm, I'm getting attacked by the sun from multiple directions now and I may have to move here soon, but that's why I'm, yeah, it's weird. Do any of my colleagues in the committee have any questions for Councilmember Freeman about the proposal that she's got for legislative agenda? I don't.
I, I don't really have questions so much, except for, it seems to me like something that is more for the advocacy agenda rather than the legislative agenda, sort of for the same reasons we just did with the energy one. So that would be my thought.
That was kind of my thought too. And I think, yeah, I think that, that makes a lot of sense. It also will rely on certain other conditions, right? Like the, I think, the availability of that low interest rate environment and, and some work at the federal level. So I just think it maybe makes more sense on the advocacy agenda. Do members of the committee have thoughts about this either way? Aside from me and the mayor who have already spoken. All right, well, great, well, let's do that. And was there a third item from Councilmember Freeman?
Yes, there's a third item, advocate for additional expungement and restoration funding.
I think Ryan covered it much better than I could have in the conversation previously. But essentially, that's where I was heading in and just trying to make sure that we're expanding our D R program, I guess, like statewide. Because I know that there are folks who are experiencing their restoration issues in other counties surrounding Durham and it'd be a better push to just work at the state level.
So Ryan's request were to change general statute.
Say that again.
Ryan's request were to amend state statute. So Ryan's request did not include any request for funding. And so this one says restoration funding. So that's a piece that's different from Ryan. So I think part of it here is, is that, I want to be clear, if that's the ask, are we asking the state to provide some financial resources? And if so, is it to a specific agency or is it specifically to city of Durham? For our D R program and restoration work?
If I could take a, just a little bit of a liberty and just noting that I think that in acknowledging that Durham was first in developing it, the funding should be direct to Durham to kind of show other communities how to do it. And I'm not sure if that's, if that's helpful or not, but I'm not sure how that would piece out in appropriations conversation, acknowledging that the budget is going to be kind of tight this year.
Yeah. Okay, do any of my colleagues on the committee have any thoughts about a particular request?
I'll just say that I think that if, what might be useful is to ask the Justice Center, if Ryan is going to talk to them anyway, if there's any funding that they think would be important. And they may, they may think so. But I don't think we, you know, so that might be one way to go. Is to ask them if there's something they'd like to add in the funding realm.
If I could also add, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am, go right ahead.
I think it's, it's also around the, there was a conversation a little bit earlier about software and just the capabilities, acknowledging that most of this is through paper. Those changes and having funding attached is also helpful in, in, in making sure that the restorations or expansions are happening in a very rapid pace or at the speed of what they've been declared as. So I'm not sure how that works, but I know that the district attorney has mentioned a number of times that the clerk of courts, I believe it is, is the one that carries this out. And so making sure that the funding is in place for the clerks to be able to process as quickly as they possibly can and that they have the software capabilities is, is, is a good way to, I guess, to kind of frame this. If Ryan's not requesting funding support, the funding support is coming in and software and, and I guess, kind of setting up the framework.
So I think the, the mayor, I think, has a really good idea here in that the Justice Center and the D R program here in Durham have a much better sense, certainly than I do, and I suspect that many of us do on this call, much better sense of what the needs are to make this program more robust. And I think maybe instead of us trying to figure it out ourselves on this call, the mayor had a great idea of asking them, where are there funding needs that would help this program be more robust? And how can we best advocate for those as a council at the General Assembly? Does that sound fair to you, Councilmember Freeman?
And then just noting, Ryan mentioned in the chat that funding will run out in February.
Great. Okay, that sounds great. Ryan says he'll reach out. And we can, we can revisit that either in advance of the work session or at the work session. I think that's fine. Okay, well, that was one of the three things. Councilmember Freeman, thank you again, not only for proposing those changes to the legislative agenda, but also for being with us this afternoon to help us understand them. That was fantastic. Really appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And if I could, I did, I want to add an additional item. And I'm not sure if we discussed it, because I missed parts of the meeting, but I wasn't sure if reparations support was, was lined up in the conversation. But I wanted to be really clear and specific about how the reparations conversation should move forward at the state and federal level and making sure that our Senate delegation for the US Senate are on board as well.
So the, this particular meeting, I believe, is for our state legislative delegation. Is that right, Carmesha? Is that kind of how we're structured it right now?
Right.
But I certainly think we are on record as the council as supporting reparations. And if, if, if we want to send that resolution that we passed along with any other information along to our federal congressional delegation, I think that's entirely appropriate. If there is a more robust engagement that you think the city ought to engage in around that issue with our congressional delegation, we should definitely talk about that. But I think this particular setting is mostly intended for our delegation, the General Assembly.
And that, and I'm talking specifically about making sure that the General Assembly is on board, pushing it forward.
I'm sorry, I thought you said, you wanted to engage with the two senators. That's the only reason I said that.
No, 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 you're, you're, you're spot on. But the, in order to do that, it's going to take our General Assembly moving forward. The governor's already signed on, I believe, or at least acknowledged with an apology and conversation. And I would love to see the General Assembly moving along as well.
Councilmember Freeman, go right ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And Councilmember Freeman, I was on the, the call at the Unitarian Church that you hosted on Wednesday with Dr. Darity and Ms. Mullen talking about reparations. And there were some specific things that they call for in the book that include things like an apology, you know, and then to, I think, perhaps one of Charlie's points. If, if we're using the rubric that was presented through that text, you know, this would be a, a federal thing, but there might be, if there are specific things we want, like for example, you mentioned that Governor Cooper has offered some acknowledgement. If we want to bump that up from like a, like a, from a fist pump to a, a formal acknowledgement and apology for the role the state of North Carolina has played, you know, I think that would be, that would be helpful so that we can, you know, be kind of specific with our ask as opposed to like a, kind of a general or nebulous, kind of like, y'all down with reparations or no? Like, you know, had you, when you say reparations, is there a specific thing? Or, or do you think it is a, a general advocacy thing?
I, I know that there are general advocacy pieces, but there are specifics, like you just mentioned, that could be moved forward. I would love to have more conversations about exactly the order in which that happened. But yes.
So Councilmember Freeman, you submitted a request on, that was before the subcommittee, the last time we met, to create a statewide reparations commission. And so the subcommittee agreed to have that placed in the legislative agenda. So there is a reparations related item in the legislative agenda. So the one that you emailed me about this morning sounds like is in a, in a, I don't know if it's in addition to or if it's a subset of finding out what the, if there's to be a commission, then what the commission might recommend.
Yes.
Okay.
So Councilmember Freeman, can you be a little bit more specific about what you want the city of Durham to ask our, our delegation in the General Assembly to do?
So in the General Assembly, acknowledging that there are varying understandings of what reparations are and how it works or could work. I think that there's an education that needs to happen that's on the advocacy side. And then there's also the request legislatively for the study commission. And then there's also the, the third level of what I'm asking for and making sure that we're doing the acknowledgements, setting up the, the kind of pathway through from the state to the federal government. Because if the general, just general legislature is saying it, then it's different than just the city of Durham. Or saying, you know, we want to support moving forward with a reparation study or moving forward with the commission, it's very different than the city. And acknowledging where we are with ours, with our US Senate and Congress. I think there's, there's a way to pull it together around some specifics and just acknowledging history and where we are today and the disparities and so forth and so on, as, as Dr. Darity and Kirsten Mullin have laid out.
Yes, Pierce, go right ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to make a suggestion. I really like Carmesha's kind of suggestion that those could be kind of bullet points underneath the, our, the very specific ask of creating the commission. And tell me what you think, Councilmember Freeman, but you know, you said education, acknowledgement. Those things are kind of more general, but if we could, if we could, you know, find a way to put those as bullet points under the ask, which is to build the commission, which could include some of those things, that might be a way to, to summarize all of what Councilmember Freeman is asking i- in the context of a, an ask that's already been approved by this board.
How do you feel about that, Councilmember Freeman?
I think that's great. I acknowledge that I've been getting more information about programming and obstacles that have been in the way. And so I'm just trying to give us a little bit more meat to make sure that it passes or that it does move forward.
Okay, Carmesha, do you think you can add a couple of, some bullet points under there that encompass the specifics that Councilmember Freeman wanted to address in that agenda item? You're still muted, Carmesha, I'm sorry.
Thank you, sorry about that. I can absolutely do that. And so just so that everyone is aware, the recommendations that she provided to the recommendations that she provided to me is to provide rec- reparations to the descendants of enslaved Africans in order to eliminate the racial wealth gap. Number two, create a universal basic income. Number three, provide guaranteed living wage jobs that are in the federal sector or federally funded. Number four, increase the federal minimum wage to fifteen dollars or higher. Did I get that correct?
And those were the items that were in our resolution specifically. And what I'm adding is the aspect of explaining the difference in what Asheville's been talking about as reparations and Evanston has been talking, Evanston, Illinois has been talking about as reparations to what Dr. Darity and Kirsten Mulling have been saying and explaining how it has to be at the federal level. And if there needs to be clarification, if we want to do programs at the state or local level. I hope that helps. Um, I know it's conflated. It's a lot.
Uh, I'll be honest, I don't really understand where we are anymore. I um, I the um, I understand there are issues that we want our federal government to take up. Um, and that definitely needs to happen. Uh, and as I said, if we need to do a more ro- robust outreach to our federal delegation, we can definitely talk about that and do that. Um, but this agenda is for the state legislature and the things that Carmesha just read off the list, I didn't think were really part of of state legislative agenda, but I hope you will correct me if I'm wrong. Councilmember Freeman.
Yes, I do think that at the state level, um, there are other states that have increased their minimum wage from seven twenty-five to fifteen dollars. And so just noting, there are aspects of it that could be at the state level if we could get to that point.
Well, we already have increasing the minimum wage on our legislative agenda. That's already part of our agenda.
If you're if you're asking me for an explanation of why I would include it under the auspice of it being declaring the wealth, like to decrease the wealth gap. I think that that's a complete and separate issue specific to black and black people who are descendants of slaves. And there's there's an an a kind of a a subtext or note that should be made that's different from just general raising the wealth gap or raising the wi- minimum wage.
Okay, um, here's what here's what I'd like to ask you to do. Um, I'd like you to work, Councilmember Freeman, I'd like you to work with Carmesha on the agenda item that this committee's already approved to set up a a state commission on um on reparations. And if there is a way for you to describe the commission that you would like us to advocate for or ask our delegation to advocate for, that encompasses all of the concerns that you'd like to have raised. Um, then let's let's do that. Let's make that description more robust. And then we can take a look at it um at the work session where we consider the legislative agenda. Does that make sense to you, Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. And hopefully, together, um, you can help me understand better a thing that I'm having a hard time getting my head around. So thank you. Appreciate it. Um, okay, uh Carmesha, were there some other items that we had had questions about from the last time we went through the agenda that were still open items, or is that all we've got?
So um, that was it. There were some some follow-up items that I uh with the process before. And um, and and part of that was um, just going back to the actual the previous legislative agenda, um, doing a little bit more homework on uh which items were actually um filed. And so um, I'm pleased to say that uh, last time we had, when I say last time, the last long session, we had four local bill requests, um, two from the Transportation Department and two from the Department of Public Works. So all four of those had been filed by Senators Woodard and um and McKissick. So um, that was uh one follow-up item um for me. But I also have done some follow-up with transportation staff as well as public work staff to see if those two requests are still valid concerns for them. And so I've gotten confirmation from um Public Works that they are still interested in their items relative to right-of-way acquisition. Um, and I'll be meeting with uh transportation staff early next week just to confirm um their requests about electronic speed enforcement and speeding in in school zones. Um, I did have a note about law enforcement recordings, and so I think Mr. Chair, that was something that you would um think that was on your list. Um, I have a note there. But I think that was something that was in our legislative agenda from the last time. Um, I think the concern was about allowing the council to be able to access the recordings without having to get um, to go before a judge.
Yes, that's right.
Mm-hmm. And I think I think the reason I have that note there, because it's related to what was our support of the league's agenda relative to law enforcement recordings. And so um, um, the league nor metro mayors have adopted their legislative agenda. So um, I don't think that we were interested in pursuing our interest in in obtaining law enforcement recordings was not contingent upon whether the league pursued it. If I recall that conversation uh correctly, we that's something that we were interested in doing anyway, meaning getting the law enforcement recordings without permission from a judge.
So my recollection as well.
Okay, good. So at this point, there's no um, no other items. I was trying to capture um a number here and Mr. Chair, I don't know if you um would be interested in hearing what we have um at this.
Can I just have, well, I have one other thing I wanted to bring up, Carmesha, before we move forward. Um, the, there is an item on the legislative agenda that we that we approved as a committee last time regarding uh the uh creating a requirement that uh the owners of a firearm report immediately the loss or theft of a firearm. Um, since we met, we received, the mayor received and forwarded to the rest of us a number of emails from residents suggesting additional gun safety measures that we might advocate for with our delegation. As a result of those emails, I spent some time talking uh to Durham Representative Marshall Morey, who um, I think it's fair to say is the champion of gun safety legislation in the General Assembly, at least as far as our delegation is concerned. She drafted and filed two years ago an omnibus gun bill, uh gun safety legislation that had a bunch of provisions in it that um that encompass a lot of the individual uh requests that we received over the last week from Durham residents who wanted us to have a somewhat more robust uh ask of our legislators uh around gun safety. And so after talking to Representative Morey, I shared with the other members of the committee earlier today uh, the the Gun Violence Safety Act, uh House Bill eighty-six, maybe? Did I get that right? Uh, yes, House Bill eighty-six, um, that Representative Morey uh suggested to me yesterday that she was interested in reintroducing in the upcoming long session. Uh, that bill um has a bunch of different moving parts, including um seventy-two hour waiting period uh for firearm purchases, uh prohibiting assault weapon or long gun purchases uh by uh underage individuals. Um, prohibits bump stocks and trigger cranks, requires safe storage of firearms, um, requires a reporting of a lost or stolen firearm, so it incorporated the the ask that we made during the last long session. Um, requirement that firearm aren't that gun owners uh carry liability insurance. Um, repeal preemption of local regulation of firearms, which is something that I know many of us here in Durham have been uh eager to see. And um, uh allowing the destruction of seized firearms, which has become a growing issue here in Durham. Um, our police department seizes a lot of firearms um and uh are not able to destroy them because of state law. And so this has led to ever-increasing storage requirements at the local level. I think with just within the last year, we had to expand our need for our our uh leasing of storage space for those uh weapons. Um, whereas historically, local governments in North Carolina were able to simply order them destroyed. Uh, and so I think that is a really good um omnibus piece of legislation. Um, and I think it's something that the council should get behind. And so my proposal to the group is that we substitute the existing item on our agenda that we approved last time. The requirement that firearm owners uh immediately report the loss or theft of a firearm with a support for Representative Morey's um omnibus bill, and that includes that provision. Now, I also talked to Representative Morey about the likelihood of the passage of the omnibus bill in the upcoming uh long session. Uh, what she told me is she thinks it has about the same chance of success it had last time. Uh, but she also mentioned that a number of her Republican colleagues approached her at the end of the last long session and indicated there were certain pieces of the bill that they might be willing to support. And so I think putting us um on the side of the omnibus bill and the measures that it conclude includes also puts our support behind individual bills that might pull pieces of that out, that might win bipartisan support, any one of which would be important gun safety measures um, both here in Durham and around the state. So that's what I wanted to say about that. Uh, I didn't know if any of my colleagues had any thoughts, concerns, questions. Uh, I see three thumbs up for my colleagues, and I really appreciate that. As a Carmesha, um, if you would uh make that change in the legislative agenda, um, I'm sure Representative Morey would be happy to know that we've got her back. There was one other thing I wanted to bring up now that I've talked a lot about that thing. Um, Councilmember Freeland, you had put in a request that the city include in its legislative agenda the Hands Free NC bill uh that passed the House overwhelmingly in the long session, but got hung up in the Senate and was not approved. Um, I believe you mentioned that was uh at the request of a constituent who reached out to you about that, is that right? Um, so I talked, I, as I recall our last meeting, I was directed by uh my colleagues on the committee to reach out to members of our delegation to find out kind of what happened with that bill. Um, as you may recall, I did some quick research during our meeting last time and discovered that we had members on both sides of that issue in the House vote. Um, and so I spoke to a couple of of legislators, um, and what I learned is that there was some opposition in the House to that bill because there was no safety data presented that indicated that driving hands-free, um, I guess, talking on a phone with a hate with a headset, for example, is any safer than talking um than talking on a cellphone regularly. Um, and that in the absence of that, I think we're just adding more uh items to the criminal code. Um, and so there were, there was a minority of members of the House. I think the end of the vote on the last reading in the House ended up being something like ninety-three to twenty-something um, in favor of the bill. It did move on to the Senate, got held up for some procedural reasons that aren't really germinated our conversation, uh, but I believe it will be reintroduced again. Uh, so I wanted to give you that context. Uh, by my count, um, the Durham's delegation, uh, the ones that were present, uh, all voted for the bill except for Representative Morey. Um, and so uh with that background, um, I just thought I would give it back to you, Councilum, Councilmember Freeland, to find out if this is still an item you want to have on our legislative agenda for our delegation going forward.
Um, yeah, I think so. Um, yeah.
Great.
Thanks, thanks for the context.
Absolutely. Um, so uh I am fine with including it on the agenda. Um, and uh, uh, I I do acknowledge that um that this does create another crime in North Carolina. Unfortunately, I don't know if it would be a misdemeanor or an infraction. I don't know what. Um, that always makes me a little nervous, um, just giving uh a law enforcement officer is another uh reason to pull someone over. Um, but uh, it is, uh, I I I think it's probably makes us safer uh in terms of operating a motor vehicle. And uh, so I tend to agree with you, Councilmember Freeland. I just wanted to make sure that we had a full conversation about the merits of it. And uh, Carmesha, if you'll go ahead and make sure that's on our legislative agenda too. Uh, as long as, I think that was where we left the conversation, colleagues. If, but if other people wanted to weigh in now, this is probably the time to do that.
I was gonna mention, um, thank you, Councilmember Reese, for bringing that up. I did have some email communication with Senator Woodard um about it, and he indicated that he intends to uh introduce relevant legislation again this session, so it sounds like.
Thank you, Carmesha. I forgot to mention that. Yes, Senator Woodard, it was the Senate sponsor of that bill um, and does intend to introduce it again this session. Councilmember Middleton, go right ahead. I saw your finger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, everybody. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Awesome. Uh, at our last meeting, um pivoting off of the hands free, is this, is it all right if I go on to my issue?
Absolutely.
Uh, la- last, last meeting I had uh brought up, I think towards the end, um, the possibility of us pursuing legislatively some tweaks to our city charter um, to bring it more, well, little background, when we filled uh council, had the person uh Alston seat, uh, a large part of our population uh in the city had expressed concern about being able to fill it via vote as opposed to selection process. And I understand that during our debates and discussion, there were a couple of charters we referenced. I think one was Chapel Hill that because of the particular way our charter is uh written, that it one reading or a viable reading could be that we were compelled to do a selection process. I I didn't necessarily agree with that reading because I don't know what would have happened if we didn't, but uh, I I think Char- Chapel Hill's charter we brought up, uh, some other charters, Chapel Hill being one of them, that um, if we had one that was written like that, would have given us that flexibility. Um, so I do want, I did want to look at that possibility of of seeing about tweaking our charter uh, to give us the 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 flexibility uh without facing any punitive action if we decided uh, we wanted to fill a seat going moving forward via election. And the second issue also was when we were discussing grants during COVID uh for our small businesses. Um, it was um suggested, or when I suggested it was said, that we we were precluded from doing grants because of our charter, but that but Raleigh had some type of language in their charter, which they were able to to uh appeal to, which will would allow them to do grants with um taxpayer funding. So if indeed those those type of tweaks are available uh, are are out there and available to to other cities, uh, then I'd like, I'd like Durham to explore uh, having our charter amended uh in a way that would give us that that type of flexibility as some of our neighboring cities as well.
Thank you, Mr. Councilmember Middleton. Do any of my uh committee colleagues have any questions or concerns they want to raise about that suggestion, those suggestions? Um, I guess I had some thoughts about that. Um, chief among them that I am nervous about asking the the incoming General Assembly to um monkey around with Durham's elections. Um, I think uh other uh cities in North Carolina have had the experience of having the General Assembly change their uh their voting rules, their voting districts in ways that the people that live in those cities did not want. Um, and it's a ridiculous partisan issue. Um, and had we had the election results uh over the last week or so uh been different, um, we might have a much better uh, a safer avenue to ask for that, but given that the General Assembly can pass a local bill um, with a bare majority, uh, and that that is not subject to gubernatorial veto, uh, asking them to to make changes to our charter makes me nervous. Um, and uh, that's, that's what I want to say about that.
Sure. I think um, and I appreciate that. And and everything about the General Assembly makes me nervous as well. I think it, I think it's a a a false comparison or a false characterization suggests it's messing with our elections. Um, the, if if there's a vacancy, and they they don't happen often, but in the in the event of a vacancy, um, giving us the, I mean, we already have the ability to make a selection, and the election language is already in there. Um, so it it's, we're not looking for any kind of new or revolutionary construct, at least in my reading. So I I don't, I don't I don't, I wouldn't characterize it as messing with our elections. Secondly, what what I find curious is that we were, we were willing to throw our weight behind um changing the mayoral term from two years to four years. And by comparison, there's only one mayor. And and I'm not talking about this mayor Schul, I'm talking about the mayor, the office of the mayor. Um, one person finds it inconvenient to have to run every two years. So for one person, we're willing to muster all of our political capital and will to change the law for one person not to be inconvenienced to run every two years. But literally thousands of our people asked us for the ability to vote and to fill one of the seats that they own. So i- it's a bit curious to me that we'd be willing to mess with the legislature or even, you know, approach the legislature about changing the term for one person, uh, because of inconvenience, because it's just easier to do it every four as opposed to two. Um, but we're not willing to do it for thousands of people who want to vote to fill their seat. To me, just is seems curious to me, and and I'm not fearful of of, and I don't think it's it's messing with our elections to look at it. Um, Raleigh, if I'm correct, and if if the illusions I made, I'm I'm perfectly willing to have them fact-checked. But if Raleigh has that provision, whatever uh landmines they had to navigate to get to that, I think it's worth doing. And if Chapel Hill has a And if Chapel Hill has a charter that allows them to do it, whatever landmines they had to navigate to get to it, I'm willing to do that as well. But, but your fears are noted. I, I have, I have some very visceral concerns about this legislature as well. But to me, thousands of our residents asking, you know, to, to be able to fill a seat in the council is far more compelling than one mayor, not Steve Schul, the mayor, the institution, the office, one mayor, not wanting to go through the, you know, the trouble of running every two years as opposed to four. I find the people more compelling. So.
Well, I appreciate the frank exchange of views we've had on this subject. Do any of my other colleagues on the committee have any other thoughts they'd like to share?
I'll share some. I think we could take the temperature of our delegation on this. I'm also, I think, I mean, Councilmember Middleton raised two different things. One is the, the election and the other is the grant, the ability to have grants. And I do think, in my mind, they raise sort of different levels of danger at the, at the General Assembly. I think if we could find a charter provision elsewhere about grants that we thought we could match up with, you know, that seems like a good idea. The other one I do worry about, and, you know, for the mayoral thing, what we know is that for the mayoral term, we, we can do that without the GA. But this is a charter provision, and so we can't do it without the General Assembly. So, it, it gives me, it concerns me, the idea that we would go in and ask for a change like that. But I think we could ask our, our, we could ask our delegation. I think, and, you know, we should talk about some at the work session too about, I, I need to give some more thought to the idea about what I think about, you know, what is the, what's the best thing about, what's the best way to replace someone? And so I haven't really given that a lot of thought. I'm sorry, because Councilmember Middleton did talk about this last time. I just didn't really think about it much. I apologize. So, I'd like to think about that more, talk about the work session, and maybe take the temperature of our delegation.
I think that, I think that's a fair. I, I would just remind us that prior to realizing that we could do it without the General Assembly, we were more than willing to approach the General Assembly to do it. And I guess just for me, a- as this discussed, as we prosecute this discussion, I guess for me, a question I would have is intellectually, what is the difference or the difference in the level of danger between approaching them to allow us to change terms for a mayor as opposed to allowing us to change the terms for filling the vacant seat? If there's danger, I, I guess for me, moving forward, we don't have to ask it now.
I don't think, I don't think there's any difference in that. I, I agree with that.
Thank you.
Any other members of the committee want to share their thoughts about this item before we move on? Anybody, any other, Councilmember Cabirra, you turned your camera on to know if you wanted to. It's because you want to be recognized. I'm happy to, though.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. I think that my memory was that we put it on the agenda as a same thing, temperature check. This is for the mayoral, noting that it was a risk. At the time, I remember having the same conversation around, do we really want to approach the General Assembly with a charter change? And then discovered that we didn't have to. And then I think it just remained on the agenda because we forgot to take it off.
I have a different.
Well, I think, well, Councilmember Middleton, it's, yeah, let me, let me talk to you.
Happy to talk about it in the work session as well.
Yeah. I think the, the path forward that we have today is that we're going to revisit this, these two issues that you've raised about changes to our city charter at the work session where we do the, the next bit of work on our legislative agenda in preparation for the council approving it at our first council meeting in December. And I think we'll have lots of opportunities between now and then to think about whether or not these are ideas we want to do, just like everything else on the agenda, quite frankly. And I, I don't, and so I think that is a good path forward. And, and I think that's, let me just ask the members of the committee, do you think that's the, that's how we should handle it today? I see some nods.
Yeah.
I see some thumbs. That's fantastic. Councilmember Middleton, please go right ahead.
That, that will be the case with everything. I, I mean, we're going to be discussing everything at the, it's not just this particular issue. We're going to be discussing legislative agenda period a- at a subsequent work session. Correct? That, so this is, this is usually being carved out from the rest of the legislative agenda. I mean, we're, that's, that's a normal course of, of events for the legislative agenda period.
Councilmember Middleton, at, at this point in the process, the commit, this committee has approved a certain number items to go onto the legislative agenda. The broader council, the full council will have an opportunity to talk about it at our, at the next work session. And then after that, the council will have the opportunity to pass whatever legislative agenda the city council says at the work session they want approved.
I'm with the process.
And, right. And I was explaining to you. And so the, the issue that you've raised has not been approved by this committee to go on our legislative agenda. And the mayor suggested that we talk about it at the work session where we approve the, where we discuss the legislative agenda. And it was the will of the council at that time to add it to the agenda, then that's what we would do.
Mr. Chairman, I was there and all that. I, I heard that and I understand it. And I'm clear as to the delineation of the process and how we're going to proceed. So.
You, you asked if it had been carved out from the legislative agenda, and I was simply explaining, I was simply answering that question. I apologize.
No worries. No worries. And the previous point I was making about the, there was a statement, a characterization made about the previous conversation and how it proceeded. And I'm simply saying, I have no recollection of any warnings being raised or concern about the approaching General Assembly about this issue. This issue was brought by our mayor, that issue being changing the term of the mayor was worked before us. We had a, you know, robust conversation. We were all in agreement with it. I don't, and of course, the beauty is these things are recorded and they're amended, so we can pull up the recording. But I don't recall any concern being expressed about approaching the General Assembly. I think we, we were, we were more than willing to go forward with it without any controversy. So, I just want to question that characterization of the conversation and would be more than willing to be checked. Again, I have no problem being fact-checked, but that's not my recollection of the way the conversation went, that we were more than willing to proceed with changing the mayoral term, even if it meant approaching the General Assembly. And it was codified in our legislative agenda. And then subsequent to that, we found out that we might not have to go to the General Assembly. And then we pulled it off. So, that was my recollection. That's all I wanted to put forward. Thank you.
Absolutely. All right, Carmesha, I think we have our marching orders on this particular request. I guess two requests, strictly speaking.
Two requests. And so just so that everyone else is aware, after the last committee meeting, I did have some follow-up with the city attorney's office. So, we have begun discussions about the two, these specific two charter amendments, given that this was mentioned near the end of our meeting the last time. So, we will be prepared to have whatever discussion takes place at Thursday's work session about these two items as well as any other item that's on the proposed legislative agenda along with the advocacy items that have been discussed thus far.
Fantastic. Carmesha, do we have anything else left to do with this particular agenda?
So, so, oh, the mayor raised this. I was going to say he had an item.
Go right ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Just on that last comment that Carmesha made. Carmesha, I think it would be useful if the attorneys could find elsewhere, i- i- you know, if they could show us some wording from some other charters relative to the grants. You know, if there's something that we see that we could copy, that we had comfort with, if we wanted to do that.
So, Mr. Mayor, we can certainly do that. Krista Kukero and I discussed that probably about an hour or so before this meeting today.
Okay, great.
When we talk, when we talk about the grants, it seems like we've been talking about the charter. And what Krista reminded me is that there's the charter and then there's the North Carolina Constitution. So, so the charter cannot be looked at separate and apart from the state constitution. So, that's the information that she and I will discuss and be prepared to respond to in Thursday's work session.
Right. Go ahead, Carmesha. What else did? Councilmember Middleton, did you have something you wanted to add there?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I'll yield if you were recognizing, I'm sorry.
Great. I was. Carmesha, what else did we have to do with respect to this agenda?
So, there was one other item as we transitioned out of our last meeting where the mayor mentioned a desire to pursue alternative energy and power sources. So, I wanted to get clarity whether that was a, just a broad term that we wanted our delegation to advocate in the event that something comes up or if that was related to specifically anything that came forward from the EAB. So, I thought that I should probably get some clarity on where that concept should land to pursue alternative energy and power sources.
So, that's a great question. Appreciate you reminding us of that. The, the recommendations from the Environmental Affairs Board include language that would promote the ability of residents and governments to use more forms of alternative energy. And I guess I'll ask members of the committee, do y'all have any particular, do you guys see any particular need to make any additional revisions to the agenda to accommodate the, the note that Carmesha has?
I agree with you that EAB, what they put forward would, was my sense when I read them.
Anybody else have a thought they want to share about that? Okay. Anything else, Carmesha?
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Great. Councilmember Middleton, I'm sorry. I wanted to follow back up with you again.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I was, I wanted to ask that the mayor's request of the city attorney to, lack of a better term, scour other charters to look for particular or possible language regarding the grants. I'd ask that the same due diligence be done in terms of other charters with language that would allow the possibility of election flexibility in terms of filling vacant seats if they should come up. I mean, since they're, they're twin recommendations, while they're doing the due diligence on grants, that they would do due diligence on the other matter as well.
We're getting a thumbs up from the city attorney's office that that will be done.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely. Colleagues, do we have any other business we need to get done at this meeting of the Legislative Committee? Seeing none, Carmesha, thank you again for your incredible work on this. I can't imagine everything that goes into preparing us to do this hour and a half of work. But I'm in awe. I'm grateful. Thank you very much. And thank you to my colleagues for such a great insight and suggestions. We're going to have a legislative agenda that we're all proud of. And with that, I will adjourn our committee. Thank you, everybody, and thanks for all the folks that are watching. Take care. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you all.